...of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, May 22nd. This is order. Please rise from the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is as follows. The United States of America and the United Republic of America, which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker. I would like to ask for a motion to approve the minutes from May 1st. So moved. And May 8th. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye. I have a, just a question, I guess, on the minutes. On page three, it says, "Selectman Murphy stated that he has been the president of Madison Ludley for the last eight years, retired here. He stated that in his capacity, he has not heard complaints from the community on the field," and added to this meeting was called the term blah, 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 blah. So I think it was that I had heard. So we could just amend that.
I have a motion for the, to approve the minutes as amended. So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
For Selectmen's comments, I'll defer to later. Any Citizens' comments?
Would you put a microphone there? Yeah.
Tom, I have a Citizens' comment. Will we be able to speak about the town campus baseball field at some point today? Can we open up the agenda for that at some point?
Uh, that's good. Scott's gonna do that.
So Scott will be able to do that for us?
Yeah.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Hearing number five. Discussion take action to approve calling a public hearing on Tuesday, June 13th, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss the Shoreline Railway Trail extension project. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would like to make a motion to open the agenda. I'm in 5A. So moved. Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
5A is discussion take action on a proclamation honoring Eagle Scout Patrick Fady. I just got word that Patrick's gonna have his Eagle Scout ceremony in June. And Pat was an intern in my, slash, my suburb, as well as working with Youth and Family Services.
He's still on board right now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's with my husband's group.
And he's a great kid, one of my favorite kids in town. I'm gonna read the proclamation. Whereas the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Madison hereby proudly acknowledges the outstanding award of Eagle Scout to a member of the Boy Scouts of America, whereas throughout his commitment to community with a dedication, purpose, and commitment to a high level of leadership, excellence worthy of proclamation and praise by this Board and the entire community, whereas the Board gratefully recognizes the tremendous efforts of this young man, is with great pride that the Board officially extends their congratulations to this newly awarded Eagle Scout and wishes him all the best of luck in his future endeavors. Furthermore, that by the powers vested in the Board of Selectmen by the State of Connecticut and the Madison Charlotte, we, the members of the Board, hereby unanimously acknowledge the scouting achievement of Patrick Fady, done this 22nd day of May, 2017, in the Town of Madison, Connecticut." So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
And Tom, I want a motion to open the agenda, but I don't know where we wanna put it, to have a discussion, take action, and discuss the...
We'll just open that one. We put it here?
We'll just put it here? Sure. You sign this, and I'll pass it back down. So I guess, you know, the question would be just having a, if we can get a status update on where we are from Mike, on the town campus baseball field, and discuss the opportunity to afford a special appropriation.
Okay.
Mike, do you wanna just give us a, maybe just an update on where we are currently from a project standpoint?
Sure. Did you guys just vote so I missed it? Yeah, did you? Okay, I'm sorry.
We did.
I heard you were gonna make a motion, but I missed it. Um, we are, let's see.
Stealth mode.
Mike, you're gonna have to use the microphone here. Well, yeah. The tension netting system is, the tension, um, netting system is on?
Yeah.
Backstop is, is, has been installed since our last meeting. The fence top protection came in and has been installed. The wall padding system is, has been delivered and has not been installed yet. And just today, the fence contractor finished up the, uh, the chamber and fencing and left field follow hole that had needed to be installed. So that's, that's the progress since our last meeting, like, two, two weeks ago or something.
That's great. And I know there was a discussion at the Board of Finance meeting last week with regard to the total cost of the project. The discussion was, it's approved by the Board of Finance to put aside $23,000 available from our contingency fund to be able to be leveraged for this, this special appropriation. So I guess I, I would like to make a motion to hold a special appropriation for the, a total of $23,000 for the town campus baseball field to complete the project with the assumption that, you know, the money is there, and if we don't need it, we don't use it. So I'm gonna provide the availability of funds to complete the project as discussed with the, the baseball community.
I'd like to second that motion.
So I have a, I guess I have a question of procedure. The, um, to do a special appropriation, wouldn't we need a cost specific? Wouldn't we need the, um, the actual work, the cost? Right now what we have is an estimate.
We need contracts that we can, we can authorize because the special appropriation is, we wanna get it done before the fiscal year, we got the contracts that could be signed once we've authorized to do it.
Right.
And as I said last time, I can't vote for a special appropriation with ifs, what ifs, or approximately. I wanna see, if it's $10,935, we put it on C. Until then, I can't vote for a special appropriation.
So I know, you know, in conversations with the town engineer, do we have, do we have three quotes for the different vendors in your, in your notes?
Yes. I think we talked about, uh, I can't, actually, I can't remember, I can look and see when it came in, but we, we had gotten three quotes for the screening and spreading of the topsoil from Schumach Construction to Storybrothers Excavation and Seashore Construction. And the only, the other item is, um, the purchase of the infield material. And we have received three quotes from New England Specialty Soils, Keegan Construction, Markhaven, and Desiato San, um, Stores Area.
And then what about the labor for the dugouts?
Um, I had, I had requested a quote, I think, I don't know, is Pete trying? Is Pete here?
Yes, he is. Pete.
I have to look back through my file, but Pete had, Pete had requested a couple quotes. Now, if you give me a second, I'll find them.
So I think, not to interrupt you, I, I agree with the idea of a special appropriation to get this project completed, but I am extremely uncomfortable that we do it based on a spreadsheet list of the items to be completed. I would actually wanna know that we've got executable agreements in hand, so that we're, when we ask for an appropriation, it's an appropriation, not a series, because we didn't get it right the first time.
Is that typically the way it's done? My understanding was, we discussed that we just needed to have the three quotes from each vendor, but that was what we asked for, not specific contracts.
Well, but I think, you know, we are...
I mean, look in the minutes, if we wanna look at it.
The most recent, the most recent cost estimate has the infield material at $95.80.
Mm-hmm.
When we last talked about it, it was $18,000.
No.
I have an email from you that says it was $18,000.
No, there was a range, there was a range, I think what we talked about, there's a range of costs between $10,000 and $18,000. And I did send an email, sent, uh, in fact, and I said, it's, uh, the end of our meeting, it depends on where we purchase it. $95.80. Yeah, $95.80 is the low.
This is why we need something in writing, that here's, the infield material's gonna cost this much, and we're gonna do a contract for that, and this is gonna cost this much, there's a contract for that, because I'm not gonna vote for what ifs.
But isn't that the point of a special appropriation, in the sense that you're, you're putting the money aside from the contingency standpoint to then be able to spend up to a point?
In order to have a special appropriation from this year's budget, you have to have executed contracts before June 30th.
I was not advised about that by the Chair of Board of Finance?
Well, maybe the Chair of Board of Finance knows some rules that I don't, but the fiscal year closes on June 30th. If you haven't spent this year's money on June 30th, it goes to the general fund. So therefore, if you're gonna have a special appropriation, you have to have signed contracts by June 30th to be able to get a special appropriation.
So can we talk about, when we're talking about those other projects, when we're doing, you know, actually do the initial, pay for the initial, or do the next year's?
The good news is, we have two more meetings before the close of the year. So we have time to get the documentation together and still do the special appropriation and meet the constraints. I, I don't think tonight is the right time to, to vote on this. I would, I would suggest we table this until we have those, those specific costs in front of us. And I certainly wouldn't be wanting a special meeting if it came to that, but I can't imagine with two more meetings in the calendar that we need.
Do our bylaws specifically state you have to have a contract? Or are we just... I guess I'm, I'm confused at the protocol here. I feel like we're kinda making up the rules as we go along, you know?
That's, that's...
This is a special appropriation, and we don't have to spend the money.
Correct.
I think what Mike's trying to tell us is that he's got three bids for each contract, for each of the three items that needs to be done, and that the Board of Finance looked at that, and they said $23,000 is the approximate number that would cover those three contracts.
And they were comfortable with it.
And now I think it's our turn to, to, if we wish, to follow the Board of Finance's need and get the special appropriation approved. We don't have to spend a nickel of it if, if it turns out that the other parts of the project come in under what we think. But I don't see any reason to not go ahead and approve it now.
I mean, if somebody can show me that we have to physically have contracts, I, not that I don't believe you, Bob, but at the end of the day, I, I guess I didn't understand that that was a rule or a regulation.
The fiscal year is over June 30th.
Yeah.
Unless you have an obligated funds, obligated a contract, and a purchase order before June 30th, then the money goes away.
And a purchase order's a contract.
Right. And so, until that happens, I'm not supporting a special appropriation.
But that's not saying that we can't have a special appropriation.
Absolutely can.
Right.
Can.
Just, you're saying that that's your rules.
No. The rule about finance is a finance rule, that you have to has, have to have obligated the money before June 30th.
Okay.
If you can't obligate before June 30th, you can't get it. So you don't have, you know, and you've only got a few, a few weeks to go before June 30th.
So...
I think we're splitting hairs here. Clearly, the Board of Finance is comfortable with the special appropriation, 'cause I understand they approved it. Yes. So I think the ball is now in our court, and I'm prepared to approve it tonight. I'm not, I am respectful, Bob, that you would like to see some more paperwork, but it seems to me we are quite capable tonight of, and in a position to approve it if we wish.
And again, the, the date of the field that was deemed to open the field was June 2nd. So I, I worry that if we continue to, the words were used, I think, at the Board of Finance, kick the can down the road, you know, we're gonna continue to postpone the opening of this field. And I'm uncomfortable with that. We've got teams that are ready to play on this field three weeks ago. We told them originally April 22nd. Then we've changed the date to May. Now we're saying June 2nd. It sounds like, based on the meeting that I just had this week with our Fields Commission, that June 2nd is not reasonable either, that they're not going to be able to get all the work done. I'm uncomfortable with the process right now. So I guess anything we can do with the Board of Selectmen to stimulate the, you know, the, the execution of the project, to drive it to its completion, is what we should be doing right now to get these kids on the field. End of story.
And just a small clarification now. The Board of Finance left money back in the contingency fund. They didn't approve anything, they just left it back in anticipation that the project was gonna need it. So that's, the Board of Finance didn't take any action on this.
Yeah, they did not do an appropriation.
Well, they, they left $23,000 to contingency on purpose, is what I was...
I think that's...
That's absolutely correct.
Yeah.
That's what they did.
Almost earmarked for this project, though.
They sent a signal that they're comfortable with it.
Absolutely, yeah. Absolutely. And I'm not uncomfortable with it at all. I just wanna make sure that we've got a quote that we're gonna go on, that we issue a purchase order for, 'cause we know the work isn't gonna get done before the fiscal year. So we're trying to encumber, I think is the, is the word.
You got it.
The money, so that it doesn't roll over into the general fund. We're trying to, we're, we're spending the money in this fiscal year even though we're not truly spending it. Which is, I mean, that's not uncommon, that, that, that's not new ground.
Okay. We all seem to be on the same side here. I think we're just questioning procedural steps.
Yeah, I guess. Are we at an impasse in terms of our procedural steps? Do we have a motion and a second on the table?
So is the proposal, we just do a blanket request for $23,000?
Yeah.
And not have a clear expectation of how that money's gonna be spent?
Not that it's unclear. I think the clarity is based on the screening, the infield material, and the dugout things, all of which basically equal not to exceed $23,000.
Correct.
So it's three very specific things, all of which we have three quotes for. So I guess, in my opinion, it feels a little semantical, what we're doing during the holiday.
Well, so if we're working off the same spreadsheet, the overage is $19,726.
Yep, but then my understanding is there's a drainage thing that got added? I don't think that's reflected.
That's... Can I, can I explain?
Yeah, please. Please.
First of all, Bruce, I just handed you my phone, email I sent you is there.
It said, I said $10,000 to $18,000. The, the, here's where we're at. The spreadsheet that was given to the Board of Finance, I don't know, the other night at 17, has a total of $169,726. We have debts to complete the project. We have only committed to a vendor, company, or contractor made a financial commitment of $121,247. Right now, today, if we stopped right now, that's all we have committed. We've been authorized by the First Selectmen to spend items that total another $32,928. When you add those two up, it comes to $154,176. The total, in addition, as shown on the spreadsheet I passed out, there are two items that we haven't been authorized to spend money on. Dugout construction, $11,900, and the walkway construction, $36,500. Add those two in, it totals $169,726, just like the spreadsheet said. The spreadsheet is color-coded to reflect those different categories.
Do you have a copy of that spreadsheet?
Yes, I think I do.
I don't, I don't have it.
It was passed, you won't hear about it, it was passed out before.
No, but we're talking about it, and I'll probably talk intelligently if I don't have it.
Do you like one?
No. Everybody's got one except for a member of the Board of Selectmen?
So the overage, like you said, brings us some $19,000 additional monies that we need. I, I would recommend that we add 10% to that, because the items, the remaining items of work involve earthwork. For instance, when we spread the topsoil and screen the topsoil, it might be a little waste, and they have to purchase a little topsoil. But when we put the sod down, Scott's guys may have removed more sod than we did. Scott and I have a vision measure, and so if you add 10% to the 19, it comes to $21 something around the, it comes to 22.
So 22, 23 is where it, so I said 23. Would 22 suffice?
This is from my file, explains what I just said in the bottom, it's, pardon my language, if you can read my handwriting. Bob, I didn't know we were gonna do this tonight, otherwise I would've brought you a copy of that spreadsheet.
Thanks, Mike.
Your handwriting, very easy to read. Could write like an engineer.
I would have. And do we have a sense, based on the three vendors for each item, do we have a selection? And would we know which vendor we would go with?
Yeah, so what we, you know, what we did is, in a, in a project like this, we, now I just, I explained this once before, we become the construction manager, we have not put the whole entire project out to bid, and constructed by one general contractor. So, so all along, we get quotes or proposals for different items of work, and there, and there, there aren't specific contracts other than, we get, we get three quotes, we get, we take the lowest quote, and we enter a requisition into our financial system to draw the funds for that vendor, and that becomes the contract, as one of you said. That's, that's typically how we do it. We just simply haven't been authorized. For instance, we got the three quotes in to screen and spread the topsoil, ranging $28,500 down to $8,200. We haven't been authorized yet to enter that requisition against this account and create the purchase order to give to the contractor to, to, you know, authorize him to do the work. And we haven't been authorized yet, because remember, that work isn't gonna be done until the fall. That's the, the $8,200. Similarly, with the infield material, we know the costs, they range, as I said in my email, from $10,000 to $18,000. And, well, we haven't entered, to New England Specialty Soils, the low of $98.50, we just simply haven't entered into our financial system yet, because that work won't be done until the fall. But we know the numbers, we know what it's gonna cost. There's a limited number of companies that can supply infield material. We've reached out to four of them, actually. I don't have a fourth quote, because the unit costs are, rather than $50 a ton, are up in the 90s. So there's no, there's no reason to request a proposal. But there's a limited, there are a limited number of companies that have, that have bought infield material.
I would like to see this Board of Selectmen indicate to the community that the resources are gonna be made available to complete this project. That's why I think we should vote on it tonight.
Excuse me, can I say one process point to all of this? Stacy, the Director of Finance, and I have talked a little bit about how we would go about this, going back from the Board of Finance meeting last week, when they, all they said was, we'll leave some funds in the contingency fund, and let's see what happens. But what you guys can do tonight, the process is, the Board of Selectmen recommends to the Board of Finance that they would, that you are recommending you would like to do a special appropriation. So the way I think it should be, and Stacy agrees with it, the way it should be phrased is that you want to recommend a special appropriation from the contingency fund of your, whatever your number is, and that you would like it to go into this, the baseball, earmarked baseball account in the CNRE, in the CNRE fund, in our capital improvement program. That way, any funds that are remaining will remain within our capital improvement program and the CNRE fund, and will kind of boost that fund up for other planning sources. But if we need it for the fall, it gets us through the end of the budget cycle of June 30th, and holds on to the money through the next fiscal year.
Yeah.
Correct. And in that way, let's stay in...
Is it a special appropriation line item transfer?
It's a special appropriation from contingency. When we use money from contingency, it's treated just as if we used it from the undesignated fund balance. We do the same process. Both, both boards have to approve it, and under $50,000 doesn't have to go to town meeting. It's handled the same way if you use contingency funds or undesigned fund balance.
So that's a fund that wouldn't roll over into the general fund?
Correct. No, the contingency fund, if you, if we left the funds there...
No, if we moved it over into the CIP budget, it stays there, it doesn't get swept into the general fund.
Then it stays in the CIP budget. Correct.
Correct. Yeah, I, I think that that satisfies the, the purchase order issues that we've got.
All right, so I'm, I'm gonna make a motion, then. Can I do it?
You're, you're...
Although we have to amend the motion, I think, 'cause it sounds like the wording is different. So we need to, I, I would like to, can I, can I get rid of the old motion? How do we do it?
We just, you know, withdraw it.
With, I withdraw the previous one.
I withdraw my second.
Yes, okay. So I would like to make a, request a special appropriation from the Board of Finance from contingency, the contingency fund, that will go into the baseball fund within the CNRE in the amount of $23,000.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? I'd just like to say, my, my only problem with this is, I don't like going over a bunch of things, and I think we need to be a lot sharper with what we do now, because for us to be well over $150,000 is, is totally unacceptable. So going forward, I expect to really stay within a bunch of things.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue to vote no, because I really don't know what we're gonna be doing. There's, the spreadsheet is unclear, and we talked about doing this and not doing that, and then I'm not clear what the money's gonna be for, so I'm gonna...
Okay. I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Number six. Discussion take action on the hiring of Chris Secundino, the position of grounds maintainer, opposite building and grounds feature rep, for the start date to be determined. This is the union position with a starting rate of $21.00 per hour. Position of budgetary replacement of the vacancy chair of the project.
Second?
Go ahead and show your input.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven. Discussion take action to approve a special appropriation request from the Facilities Department, $14,000 for hydrants and water mains.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
So we should probably explain what this is all about.
What is it? Bill, you wanna?
Sure. This is the fire hydrant account that we pay every year. We have an accounting issue relative to the months in the payments this year. Well, we're gonna pay 13 months instead of 12. And we need to adjust the factor that we didn't understand. There's a, and I, I broke it down so you can see, the, there's a charge for the hydrants that was very clear that we've always had, which is $31,000, around numbers a month. But then number two and number three are these other charges that, you know, fluctuate relative to what's going on with the construction and, it was a renovate, renovation adjustment charge. These are regulations that are set by the state regulatory authority, they're approved. You know, when I called and asked about them, they said we got a letter back in 2010, and we should've been able to estimate these, figure it out. I, I think that's unreasonable, we couldn't have done this, so we, we, I pledgeded $31,000 for these additional charges, it's more up into $35,000. So next year, I adjusted the estimate, so to reflect these costs, they should be covered. So there's two things. One, we underestimated the cost, and two, we're paying for 13 months instead of 12 this year, 'cause we've been behind. We've been behind a few years, and I wanna catch up, and I wanna start off fresh, and I wanna do this again. So hopefully we'll be set, and I just will adjust the account for the future as well.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number eight. Discussion take action to approve a proposal between the Town of Madison and EMCOR Credit Corporation for the financing of the Eversource Kelly D. Lightning Energy Service Savings Project. Total financing amount is $166,203.53, to be paid in 48 monthly installments of $3,463.24, due to be based on a rate of 0.1% interest. So moved?
Second.
No?
So I'm, I'm here with Woody, who's the Chairman of the Energy Committee, I'm sure you guys know that. He asked me to help him participate in the streetlights, and try and figure out the money and finalize the information. So we need the Board of Selectmen to approve the loan for 0% finance for the 48 months for the whole... for the forty-eight months, for the whole project. It also encompasses the additional lights we're doing on Wall Street. That's really how I got involved. I helped him bid up the Wall Street lights to improve the Wall Street lights that are part of this whole project. So the hundred and sixty-eight, six thousand, not numbers, one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars that we're going to borrow in the application in front of you that we paid off at zero percent finance for for, for, for years or forty-eight months. The basic numbers, which is, you know, huge savings. We're going from paying ninety-five thousand dollars a year for the lights and the maintenance to the estimated fifteen thousand dollars a year. So, I mean, that's a huge, huge savings. Now, we had to buy the lights, then we had to buy the new LEDs. And that's why we're having to pay the money back because that's what it costs to buy the LEDs.
But if I understood from the Board of Finance meeting, we are paying this, this back through savings in the electric bill.
That's correct.
So, so we're not.
Pre this project, we were spending ninety-five thousand. For the first four years after conversion, we'll be paying fifty-six thousand. So savings of almost forty thousand. After four years, it goes down to fifteen thousand. Savings of eighty thousand per year.
So while we're paying it back, we're just not saving as much, but we're saving money on day one.
We're saving money on day one.
Absolutely. Can we borrow more at zero percent?
Yes.
I'm hopeful that we can actually.
We definitely can. So I just can't, you'd be surprised with that, we just wanted those numbers that we just talked about.
Very impressive numbers.
Jack, I think we just recite bar for you. It's crazy. That's why I don't want to sell it.
I know what this year is.
Any other discussion?
Woody, could you just remind the public, where are these lights?
Well, that would, that would take more time than I'm allotted. Basically, there are six hundred and fifty streetlights in our town and we've replaced about six hundred and thirty-six so far. We're waiting for the new Wall Street fixtures to be delivered, which should be about eight weeks from now. And there are also some fixtures that couldn't be upgraded to LED because the arms that they're mounted on are bent like from either tree damage or storm damage. So they're being replaced. And there's a few other little anomalies like that. So there's, we're about ninety-eight percent complete. But no streets have been missed. It's just here and there, there are lights that haven't been repaired.
Well, on behalf of the taxpayers, three cheers to Woody and his Energy Committee.
Yeah, wow.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number nine. Discussion take action to approve municipal lease purchase agreement between the Town of Madison and Motorola Solutions to include the refinancing of phase two original lease and additional work.
So moved.
Second?
This is a phase two of the original lease that the Town of Madison entered into in the fifteenth, fifteenth fiscal year. Brought approximately one point eight million, uh, one point seven one percent. That's one point eight million. And it could be, when we started the scope of the work, we did the war test by the Arts Barn. We originally applied to put zoning and applied with that and looking for a commercial application on the tower. Since then, we have to strengthen that tower so that we accommodate up to six commercial attendants. So when the town decides, you know, the sitting council put commercial upon it for revenue, they'll be capable of doing that. An additional cost was the, initially, the town was going to do the excavation and the prep site for Motorola in the original agreement. Since then, the town is no longer going to do that. So they're going to do, and the cost is almost approximately one hundred. So the total cost increase for the whole project was two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. What it will do is increase our lease payment. We already made lease payment number one of approximately two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Lease payment due is due right after July first. This would increase our lease payment from two seventy-eight for six years per year for six years to three twenty-two for six years. However, at the same rate, one point seven one percent.
Which is the zero.
And there's a potential for revenue offsetting this by leasing space on the tower. My understanding is two concerns have already approached the town, book of resales.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Nine A. Discussion take action for two resolution authorizing first act of the signed municipal lease purchase agreement between the Town of Madison and Motorola Solutions to include the refinancing of phase two original lease and additional work.
That's the differential. And the increase in the payment on lease will also be reflected in the CIP brought to.
So I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number ten. Discussion take action.
Tom, can I bother you again? Look, we didn't open the agenda until then. For that revision.
Sorry about that. Was he even red? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to open the agenda to take a motion regarding a resolution for Motorola Solutions.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, discussion take action to approve a resolution authorizing first act of the signed municipal lease purchase agreement between the Town of Madison and Motorola Solutions to include the refinancing of phase two original lease and additional work.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you happy now?
Yes.
Good.
Thank you for a reminder.
Number ten. Discussion take action to approve a special appropriation request from the Police Department. The amount of forty-eight thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars for the phase two site work contingency. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Thank you. Jack?
That's the increase of lease payment. That's what that is. That's based on annual for the next six years. And when we update the CIP in October, that'll be reflected in the CIP for five years.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Number eleven. Discussion take action to approve a special appropriation request in the amount of fifty thousand dollars on the overtime special duty police department account. Pending town meeting approval.
So moved.
Second.
Anybody want to explain to that?
Yes.
This is, this is a, we do, it's a reconciliation we do annually. We start with about thirty-eight thousand dollars in the account. We paid the officer's time from that account. What we bill the vendors is highway construction. You've noticed a lot of AT&amp;T construction. Subsequently, they're billed for use of the car, the officer's insurance and, of course, the hourly rate. So we've taken in over eighty-nine thousand dollars so far. Generally, it makes revenue for the town, but this is the recommended way that we bring it to zero for the order. So I'm not asking for additions. We've already made one. Just trying to balance it so it goes into the order.
So we don't budget the revenue side at all. And that's why it shows up as a special appropriation.
Correct.
I don't think you can. That's what I've, that's, that's what I've been led to believe is that you can't really budget the, the overtime.
Okay. Everybody all set?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Discussion take action to call a town meeting on Monday, June twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, eight to six thirty P.M. The town came between May to approve one, a special appropriation request in the amount of sixty thousand dollars to fund the overtime special duty police department account and two other special appropriations that are deemed necessary.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number thirteen. Discussion take action to approve awarding a bid for the trash removal for the Town of Madison for the special race removal. The cost of, the cost for seventeen eighteen fiscal year is thirty-four thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I can tell you that that was the only bid that we got.
So is this not a planned item? Like trash stink or something?
This is all the trash pickup for all the town facilities, parks, beaches, trash cans downtown.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion Ryerson School project bond resolution, which is in your packet. Have you sent out to anybody today to look at? This is just in case anybody had any questions about what the resolution would look like.
Looks like a standard resolution that you do for all kinds of projects like this.
This is our bond council. Yeah. I want to test Bob's memory here.
Oh boy.
Okay.
Really?
In the past, Bob, have our building committees had the authority to issue change orders?
The building committee is to issue change orders. But then the, the.
Yeah. This document proposes that first election, the board of first electmen designate has to sign the change order.
I don't know, that happened in the past a lot. I've never got. As a building committee, we would, we provide a change order. The architect wants the door left handed instead of right handed. And then that would go through the process. I'm not sure if it went through the first election to signature or not. But I assume that somebody in this building would authorize, would sign off on the change order.
Makes sense. The building committee is working for the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
The Board of Selectmen's committee. So it would, it would seem to me that somebody over here would have signed on, on that expenditure because the building committee doesn't have any fiscal authority.
But the building committee issues the contracts, is that correct?
Yeah, but it's approved by the Board of Select. The Board of Selectmen actually approves the contract.
Recommend.
And if there's a bid opening, the Board of Selectmen, there's a bid opening. Can go to the bid opening. And then they make a recommendation.
So is it just subtly changing the wording from first elected to Board of Selectmen? Is that what you're suggesting?
No, it would be Board of Selectmen. It would have to be one person or a designate.
I was under the impression in the past that the building committees themselves could issue the change order and didn't need.
I think they issued a change order, but I think it has to be approved by somebody over here. Because they have no authority to, they have no fiscal authority.
Okay. That's just one question I had. We're just discussing this tonight.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah. That's just one question I, just I'd like to get a little more history on before we vote on it.
Any other discussion?
So, but I, actually, I just want to make sure I understand what the point Alan's bringing up. You're referring to Section D here, right?
Somewhere in there, yeah.
Yeah. They would actually create an approval for the change order that would then be subject to approval of the selectmen.
That's what that reads. The first electman or the board?
The first electman.
That's where I was getting confused.
I don't think it ever went to a Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Well, it's just like anything else. The department has induced so much. And then if it's over a certain amount, it goes to the first electman and if it's over another certain amount, it goes to the board. So you must be pointing out that if it's a change order, they want at least the first electman to sign it.
Right, but what if the, what if that change order exceeds the threshold? To your point.
Yeah. You know, those are questions you could ask. I think it's within budget, you know, they budgeted X number of dollars for the project, you're going to have, right, normally, some changes.
Oh, of course. Well, there's always a contingency for change order, isn't there?
Yeah. So if it's within the contingency or the approved amount, I don't know why it would come back. Even if the change order were for zero dollars, this process requires.
There is no such thing as a zero dollar change order. Believe me.
Thanks.
Okay? All set? Number fifteen. Discussion take action to approve the resignation of Mark Ferris from the Own and Lettings Commission?
So moved.
Second.
With our, thanks.
With our direction, thanks.
Service? All in favor?
Aye.
Following line transfers are designated as routine and appropriate for approval as a single action by the Board of Selectmen is so desired. Board member may request removal of any line item transfer in line transfer item to a percentage of this to review discussion.
I move approval. Two hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number seventeen. Tax, tax abatements and refunds in the amount of one thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-eight cents.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Citizens Commons.
Ken Corone, Heatherwood Drive? Can you pass that mic over? Mike? Thank you. Thank you, Ken Corone, Heatherwood Drive. I want to first start by just thanking the Board for approval of the special appropriation. I, I think that was a decision that was fully supported by many in this community. I know at the last Board of Selectmen meeting, we spent a fair amount of time discussing the timeline of, of the project. And as was mentioned by Selectmen Murphy, is very much behind the original dates. Not even talking about last fall, the original plan time for construction. But this year as well, it's gone from, I think it was April first to seventh, the twenty-third to May something, and now June second. I'm also on the Fields Committee meeting here for the Fields Committee for Town of Madison. And at the last meeting on Tuesday of last week, so just about a week ago, the Fields Committee asked where we stood as far as the projected opening date. And it was asked whether June second was still the date that we were all comfortable with. And the reply was, that is, quote, "highly unlikely we're going to be near that date." And.
Who made that comment?
That was, I believe Doug Mingus, correct. Right. So that, that is troubling. You know, we, we understand that they, they have other work to do and that's what they mentioned. And nobody challenged them on that quite frankly, or should we? They just said with all the rain and all the work, they said their, their entire time is spent now cutting grass and, and painting fields or lining fields. So they said they, they don't have, have time to, to attend to the field and that it's kind of bigger scope than what they can, can handle at this time. So I, I'm just wondering if we can discuss So I, I'm just wondering if we can discuss the timeline, what's reasonable, if we can marshal resources. I know that amount of twenty-three thousand, that was just approved. It is highly likely that that entire amount will not be needed. And, you know, our goal is to not have all twenty-three thousand needed. We, we want to bring this in as close to budget as possible. As we stated before, we're willing to put money towards this project to help offset some of the cost of the labor on the dugouts, and we're still willing to do that. We want to live up to some of the promises we've made as well. And there's other things we're saving money for as an organization for several years now that are going to be required at that field that will not fall within this project or the scope. We have two more teams starting practice next week that'll be using that field as their home field. That's always been their home field for those age groups, the American Legion teams, and we have a fifteen U team as well that's competing. So those families, those parents are, and some are here tonight. They're wondering if that's going to be online. We may, you know, some, I don't know if they're promises. We, we've explained to them that we're working with the town as best we can to move this project forward, but we just don't want to see this continue to be put off. Dugouts are very important. If the forms can get built, and we ask about the forms, the town is supposed to build the forms so that we can pour the cement, the cement slabs. I know Mike can speak to that. The contract, contractor for that has been stating for a month now, he's waiting to pour those, but the forms have not been built. I, I don't know how complex that is. I hear it's pretty simple, but if not, we can't start building dugouts. And if we're going to hire some private people ourselves and pay for labor or, or a big majority of that to help offset some of these costs, we really need those slabs put down so we can get the mason that we're talking to. We have a couple of masons, they've come to the field. They can't give us a firm number to charge us because they have to see the slabs down. They tell us before they're going to say. And the other side of that is, these guys price projects on how busy they are. If they're slammed with work, that number's big. If they can get in and get out, they give us a great number. They understand we're nonprofit. So they won't give us a number until they see that slab down where they know, okay, it's down, I can come here, next Tuesday, I'll be out of here next Wednesday. So that's really what we're looking for. We're looking for a discussion now with your help and input where we can get an idea, when can we open this field? I know, Tom, you're trying your best to get this field open. You've, you've made some, you know, statements to the press that it's going to be open on certain dates that haven't come through. We're not holding that against you. I know you have, you know, the best interest for this field. We just want these teams to be able to play. There's four teams right now looking to play on that field, and it's going to slip away if we don't really press to move this forward.
Are you guys using country school field?
I, I think we've used it one time.
It's open almost every day.
Yeah, and it's, it's not an ideal field, Tom. We just don't want this field put off. If it's going to be built and we have the finances to do so, we should move that field, this field forward. It's much preferable, for a variety of baseball reasons, to be playing baseball here. The field itself, there's a real bound here, not a temporary bound. It's a better field for baseball than the field they built there, which is really designed and insured as a softball field. It's just not ideal for us. So we'd rather have our home field here at Town Campus finished, looking good, and everybody here, you know, enjoying that. It's going to serve us well for decades like the first field did, but much better. And can we have a conversation? Bruce, you were very adamant that we needed to get this field open last time, and you were asking about, when can we get the foul pole in? How many weeks do you think you need to do the warning track? Well, the warning track's in, the foul pole's in, there's some drainage, there's the dugouts, and there's some sod to put down. That is, you know, maybe we hire Madison Earth Care or someone to come in and bang out just a little bit of that in a couple of days if we need to, if the fields crews can, because they say they can. They're too busy, they can't work on the field. So can we have that conversation? Thank you.
Mike, what is the situation with the dugout floor to face? The Scotts, Scotts guys are, have to finish the preparation for it? They just, they just have to
Is there a way we can request that that's a priority? Just to get the process moving?
They were, they were working, as you know, on the warning track.
But I mean, that, even that project took a couple of days relative to what they thought it was going to take. So they did it a lot faster once they put the manpower to it. I wonder if we could just make the forms a priority so we can, I mean, that's, that seems a bit like a lynchhead, right?
Is the, is the barrier all surveyed and set up for the Yes, it has been. So Just needs to be prepped by What do they have to do? What do they have to do? Oh, excavate it to the right grade, spread, spread the crushed stones. Is there a contact? They know, they know what they have to do. They just haven't been able to get to it. I met with Doug on the field last Wednesday. I think he was able to do that as well as the rest.
Scott, when you learned that the, that they were struggling to meet the June second timeline, did they attribute it to weather or that they weren't able to attribute the two days a week that they were hoping to?
All leave up, I think both.
But was the weather driving the lack? So they said if we had two days a week, we could get it done. Has, is, is this, is this a weather-driven delay? Or is this a calculation in?
I get the sense it's a, a bit of both, but I think that there's a bit of a miscalculation on how much they thought it was going to take. And, you know, there were some comments about overtime, and we, we made some suggestions about, I mean, the baseball community was away in Long Island this weekend, and there was a full weekend available to be able to work on Town Campus field and not line the traditional field. So there was availability to do it. And we were told that, you know, that it's hard to get people to work overtime. So, but they're able to work overtime to line fields.
Did you get a revised schedule? Did you get a, like a So maybe Tom, you
I'll talk about that tomorrow, see what you can find out. The other thing I'm just noticing is that we just to me approved a new person starting
On their team, yeah.
So that might help too. So I'll talk to Doug tomorrow and see if we can get things moving along.
Well, and again, I just want to make sure it's clear too that the, like, the forms and this and that. And Mike is, you know, from a workload standpoint, Mike's done everything that he's needed to do to get this ready. It's really in Scott and his, his guys' team now to, to make this happen. So I just want to make sure Mike's not taking a hit for this.
Yeah, and I, real quick, Tom, I want to address that as well. Tom, the parts of the project that are designated for the fall, replacement of the clay and the spreading of topsoil and seeding that area, that makes perfect sense for the fall. Certainly, grass grows better in the fall, it's the right time to do that. The clay can be a big project part of it. We understood that when he suggested that. Mike has tried to move this forward a ton. He's been great about that. I want to make sure that's it on the record as well because he's done a fantastic job in that regard. The walkway, I guess, is going to go in at the same time. I know Tom mentioned that in the last Board of Finance meeting, that the walkway would be in the fall as well. It's really these dugouts, the drainage, and some of the sodded area behind home plate that just needs to be done and we can get these kids on the field. So that would be the urgency on that part. The other part for the fall makes sense to us to put that off the window. You know, the conditions are better for those types of projects.
Yeah, at least we'll be able to find out tomorrow.
Do we have other public comment? Do we keep, want to keep the ball rolling just in case it's a little long time?
Yeah, you want me to correct the mic?
I have a loud voice, I don't need the mic. I just wanted to reiterate the excellent work that Ken Corone's done on behalf of Madison Travel Baseball. My son is now fifteen and a very proud member of the Hand freshman team, and it's been really, really challenging. They've had to play almost all of their games away because this field has not been outlined when it was promised to be so. Many parents have not been able to watch their kids play as a result. I know it's just a freshman team, but you know what? This is the feeder system, and use some really talented kids to the Daniel Hand system, to the varsity. They had two teams, young teams in Madison Travel Baseball, win their championships out at baseball heaven. These are the kids that are going to need a full-size field in just a year or two. I mean, it's really, really pathetic, in my view, that there is one playable sixty, ninety diamond in this town. We have a thousand soccer fields, football is catered to no matter what, but that there is one field that these kids could play on the big diamond, it's, it's absolutely unacceptable. And I really, really hope that you guys, I know there's all kinds of stuff that happens, but please make it happen because the summer season, they have a really, really aggressive schedule. We're really hoping that we can have, we don't have to travel the whole summer. It would be really nice to call Town Campus and Poulsen home for these kids. Thank you.
You're none, Lee is on report selecting
I think I sort of gave mine to the field department. So I don't think I'm going to reiterate that one at this point. I know the, the library building committee is moving along very nicely, and I think we have another meeting this week, so.
There was not much action of line four debating, but there was a question with the superintendent that if the, if these school projects fail in the referendum, what will happen to Island Avenue? And the superintendent said that would still likely close, and students be moved to between Jeffrey and Ryerson. One big point of discussion.
The Board of Police Commissioners met last week. Three brief announcements. A blood drive is being held on June twelfth at at the Police Department Building from eleven A M. to four P M. That's June twelfth. On Memorial Day, I guess we should remind everybody, we're going to have our parade, and as such, Route One will be closed from approximately nine forty-five in the morning until about eleven thirty. Hopefully. Depends how slow the marchers are, how long the speeches are, Tom.
I'm the quickest one of them.
Well, the last weather forecast I heard was not good, so.
Final announcement.
Very much shorter.
The chief reported to the Board of Police Commissioners that our police department has received another accreditation, this one from the Connecticut Police Officer Standards and Training Council, sometimes known as POST. And not only did we achieve their accreditation, but we were told we received the highest tier accreditation, which is called Tier Three. And that only a handful of Connecticut police departments received that accreditation. We're very pleased to hear that, chief. Nice job, chief. One final announcement.
Madison is the only dual-credited agency in state Connecticut. For state police, all of us is the only dual-credited one in the nation.
That's good news.
That's great stuff, chief.
I want to briefly review the Town Pension Committees met last week, and there will be a recommendation coming forward from the Town Pension Committees to this board. It's time for us to have a look around at the investment advisor marketplace, and we've been working with the firm for about a decade now. And while we, while the pension board members seem to be quite satisfied with this firm, it is timely to go out and look around and see, talk to some other firms, see what's doing. And so that formal process will start here based on a recommendation from the Pension Committee to this board that they go through an RFP process, and that'll be coming to one of our June meetings. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Al.
So one of Madison's landmarks, we'll be getting an update shortly. The Madison Arts Theater is going to be playing the new marquee sign-up. It's a state-of-the-art, I'll get this wrong, LED, true LED display. It can approximate the look of the old marquee. It will save the theater folks from climbing up on a ladder and changing the signage frequently. It will allow them to also advertise their coming attractions. And the planning and zoning, had a demonstration here in the parking lot design, is, is really quite incredible. Should be an exciting change for downtown Madison to go along with the general facelift that we're
The only thing I have is, we met with Motor Destruction, who is the company that won the bid to build the fieldhouse over Strong Field. And they are in agreement, I'd say, with our schedule. And we're looking forward to having those done in time for next season's open.
Tom, did you say so in your remarks to us? Did you say that the Arts Barn, we're trying to have something on the agenda next time?
Anything else?
We adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.